Okay, good afternoon. Let's call the meeting to order for the June 22 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. All right, going on to current business, we are now going to... First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Brenner, do you need any clarification regarding any items on the consent calendar?
None.
Councilmember O'Neil?
None.
None? Oh, excuse me.
Councilmember Dixon?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Blom?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Duffield?
None.
Mayor Protam?
John.
Hold on. Thank you. Next item is a proclamation acknowledging our hope... Bernie's here. Bernie Sal... There he is, right there. Bernie Salvestead's volunteerism and service. Bernie can come to the podium. I'll read the proclamation. And then Bernie, if you'd like to say a few words.
Sure.
We'd love to hear those. And we'll take a photo afterwards. But I've got the proclamation right here. And I believe this is... Especially for the folks at Corona del Mar, but for everyone in our community, well deserved. Whereas Bernie Salvestead, a Newport Beach resident, local business owner, and civic advocate since 1983, served in a variety of volunteer leadership roles within the community of Newport Beach and successfully contributed to the strategic development of countless public programs. And whereas Bernie Salvestead was officially elected to the Advisory Board of Directors for the Corona del Mar Business Improvement District in 2004, and advanced to chairman of the board in 2006, where he remained in leadership for over 15 years. Bernie successfully guided the organization through a variety of projects, including capital improvements, marketing programs, financial objectives contributing to the business environment, and overall vision plan for the Corona del Mar Business District. And whereas Bernie Salvestead was elected in 2003 as vice chairman of the Board of Directors of the Corona del Mar Chamber of Commerce, taking an active role in the organization's strategic development, local events, and membership programs. Bernie was appointed chairman of the Corona del Mar's Government and Community Affairs Committee, and for 18 years has successfully led and moderated discussions on pertinent topics of local legislation and civic affairs concerning the business and residential life in Corona del Mar. And whereas Bernie Salvestead led the charge for both the Corona del Mar and Newport Beach Centennial Celebrations by organizing committees to fundraise and build two memorial plazas to celebrate 100 years of city history. The Corona del Mar Centennial Plaza was completed in 2004, showcasing the town center clock tower, memorialized tiles, time capsule, and landscaping. And the McFadden Square Legacy Project was completed in 2006 at the base of the Newport Pier with a focal point of a bronze sculpture representative of our community. And whereas Bernie Salvestead revitalized the Newport Beach Historical Society in 2014 by forming a 501(c)(3) for the purpose of preserving the rich history of Newport Beach. Under Bernie's leadership of the board, the Newport Historical Society has created a library, a museum of the Balboa Peninsula, and has secured funding through membership, sponsorship, and grants. Now therefore, I, Brad Avery, mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Bernie Salvestead for his many years of service and dedication to the City of Newport Beach and the District of Corona del Mar. Wow. That's a lot of contribution, Bernie. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brad.
Oh, hang on just a second. I'm sorry, Joy.
I just wanted to say, as a member of the Corona del Mar community, Bernie, how much we appreciate all you've done to beautify our business district and the contributions that you've made in so many different areas. And I think it's interesting that as a former council member from another city, that you recognized which side of the die issue wanted to be on. And we really, we really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Of course, over the last 18 years or so, especially 15, city councils have been a great aspect and help to Corona del Mar bid. It's formed in 1997, 24 years old. I've been involved for one way or another for 18 years, chairman for 15 years. And I think that Corona del Mar led the city for a while in doing improvements. And I think you started... I don't know if Dave Webb is here, but anyway, there are a lot of working groups in the peninsula and the other areas of the city that kind of took off after us when we were doing some of the good things in Corona del Mar. So I think we led. And if you remember, about 15 years, we had seven members to nine members, depending on when we changed that. So probably over 100 members in Corona del Mar, working to help the city. So I think that is an attribute to all the people. One of the great members here is Keith Dawson. Dawson's been on our board off and on for, I guess, the board, over 20-some years, actually, off and on. And his wife served also. And in other words, Scott Leydlaw did a lot of extra work. Our board members presently that we have Scott Leydlaw, Keith Dawson, Andre Sotomayor, Ernie Campanera, Ted Hanley, Hameed Kanip Gunpur, Scott LaFleur, Anne Jasmine... I'm not going to pronounce her last name. So, and there's actually Jim Walker did a lot of work, and more than anybody, Linda Leonard did a... has done. She was on the bid board before we got involved. So she's been involved over 20-some years, probably, and been a fabulous asset to Corona del Mar. So I think I just want to thank the council, present council, and think Corona del Mar's done a good thing. I won't take time to tell you all the things we've done, but I'm going to hand these... have somebody hand these brochures to you. And it'll illuminate everything that we've done in the past years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bernie. Let's get a photo if we can. All right. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from the American Legion. We're going to hear from John Reynolds, American Legion Commander of Newport Harbor Post, the well-known post, the sailing post 291. Thank you.
Mayor Avery, Mayor Protam Muldoon, council, staff, feel like I'm among friends here since I know somebody of you already, so... But my name is John Reynolds, and I'm currently the commander of American Legion Post 291 in Newport Beach. Are we on? Is it working?
Yeah, I can hear you pretty well.
Okay. Today, I'd like to provide you with a brief overview of the American Legion posts in Newport Beach, and note many of the community activities that the post actually does for the city. So here's why I plan to cover a few remarks, first of all, about the American Legion overall, and then continuing on to talk about Post 291 in Newport Beach. The American Legion is the world's largest... I better click here. World's largest military veterans support and service organization. It was founded in 1919, right after World War II, World War I, in Paris by a lot of officers and enlisted people that had been involved in World War I, trying to preserve the relationship and the associations of themselves during the Great War. So the membership eligibility is anyone who's now, because of the Legion Act of two years ago, anyone who has served on active duty even a day since December 7, 1941, is eligible to join the American Legion. Headquarters is in Indianapolis, near my old hometown. And you see a picture of the building there on North Pennsylvania Avenue. There are approximately 2 million members worldwide, and about 12,000 posts worldwide. The mission, again, is for military veterans helping each other and their families. And the still-called four pillars of the American Legion show all the things that the American Legion is primarily involved in, including, as you see, Americanism and children and youth, and trying to develop that patriotism in our younger generations. So patriotism, law and order, and mutual healthiness are the key things that the Legion's about. So Newport Harbor, well, it was founded 97 years ago and incorporated. The state of California is a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation. And it has about 7,000 so-called Post 291 family members. First of all, are the veterans themselves, and about 4,000 of those. And then there's auxiliary, made up of spouses and descendants of military veterans. And in fact, Councilmember Brenner is a member of that organization. And then we have the sons of the American Legion, and I'll say more about all of these later on. It is the largest American Legion post in California, so Newport Beach has bragging rights for the largest American Legion post. And in fact, it may be the largest in the world, or pretty close to it. And it's the only American Legion post with its own yacht club, the American Legion Yacht Club, which does many activities for the community as well as for its members. Okay. The post property is owned by, at least from, the City of Newport Beach. It's under a long-term lease, and it includes three permanent structures, the main building with the Legion Hall and a bar and a restaurant and other facilities there. And then there's a utility building which has showers and restrooms for the sliprenters. And then finally, there's a building called The Hut, which started out as a schoolhouse farther east in Newport Beach, but then the city decided to develop Bay Avenue. So the building got moved up to that property, and it was the first Legion Hall, and where the Cub Scouts were actually born. And then they also have 47 wet slips in the marina and a few trailerable boats. And then, of course, we're next... Right next door neighbors to Marina Park, which the city put in about five years ago, which is excellent structure. Let's see, the post 291 family. Let me tell you a little bit about them. First of all, as I mentioned, the post itself is the military veterans. There are about nearly 4,000 members there. The American Legion Auxiliary, spouses and descendants, and there are about another 1,500 of those. And then the Sons of the American Legion, whose fathers or grandfathers were veterans, and about another 1,500 of those. And then the American Legion Yacht Club, which serves to provide nautical activities for the post, and its members are members of one of the other organizations there, as is the Honor Guard, which provides military honors for military veterans and communities. The post, of course, does... is focused on military veterans, and a lot of the activities it does for military veterans. And so you can see a list of those here, but one of the things I'd rather focus on are the numerous activities that the post 291 family organizations do for the community in the City of Newport Beach. And starting out with the post itself, you know, when the pandemic started about 15 months ago, one of the first things the post did was set up a drive-through takeout food service. Remember, the whole community was shut down, locked down. But because food service is one of the 14 critical infrastructure areas in the nation, and the post had a perfectly functional kitchen and a very talented and skilled staff with a chef and cooks, and it... We were able to launch that, as a lot of restaurants did in Newport Beach. And then we also provide homeless veterans assistance, and I'll say more about that in a little bit. There's the swift boat visits, where the... This World War... I mean, the Vietnam-era boat is brought up from San Diego. And then the various Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies, the tradition... In fact, some of you were at a Memorial Day ceremony the last 31st of May. So, and we appreciate your attending. Thank you. So, the auxiliary. Well, the auxiliary, one of the things that this auxiliary entity did during the pandemic was to sponsor American Red Cross blood drives. They collected 63 pints of blood in two sessions. And that's really important, and an important resource for the entire country, for them to be able to do that. They also do other things, like the Bags of Love, where they put together these little gift bags for hygiene products and other things that are helpful to homeless women. And they hand those out in the community. Make-A-Wish, they haven't been able to do for a couple of years, but they host the Make-A-Wish kids at the post on the Fourth of July, and hopefully, next year, that can be continued again. And they also do these children's parties for both Halloween and Christmas. The Sons, well, the Sons is a very active organization of the... And they put together patriotic events like Flag Day, which I believe Councilwoman Dixon... Oh, well, she was in the Patriots' Day. And they put on a pancake breakfast, that's coming up on July 4th next week, or a week from Sunday. And then that's open to the public. And then they, of course, open up the viewing area there at the post for seeing the annual Christmas Boat Parade. So they do a lot of things. The Yacht Club, well, it's... It does many things for, of course, for its members, but also for the community. They're one of the hosts of the Southern California Yachting Association Midwinter Regatta in February, the ongoing Monday night races, harbor races, which a lot of the yacht clubs sponsor in Newport Harbor. They conduct youth sailing instruction, and the Old Glory Gloat Parade, coming up. And we encourage you, if you have a boat, register for it, decorate it, red, white, and blue. And that's coming up again on Independence Day, Sunday, the Fourth of July. And they also do an incredible event, the Sail for the Visually Impaired each year, which about 200 blind or visually impaired people, we take... They take them for boat rides around Newport Harbor, and just outside the entrance. So that's really an enjoyable event for them. And they've been doing this for several years in conjunction with another yacht club. The Honor Guard, well, the Honor Guard is an award-winning team that conducts patriotic events for the city and the community, as well as honors for deceased military veterans. And they've been ongoing as much as they can during the pandemic, but right now, they're extremely busy with a lot of events. One thing I wanted to mention, and I know it's a little bit off-topic, but that's surviving the pandemic, and as all of us had to do. The post was very fortunate over the past two years in having an exceptionally skilled team of professionals, both of the post officers and the post employees, that kept the place going. First of all, safety was paramount for not only the members, but also the staff and our employees. So yes, we did face masks, social distancing, quarantining if somebody did catch the illness, and strongly encouraged vaccinations, and I think our entire staff of about 30 people is vaccinated at this point. So that's working. And in addition, solvency. As most other organizations, and restaurants in particular, during the pandemic suffered loss of revenue, it turns out there are also reduced expenses just in volume. And the post, through rigorous management of its finances, was able to stay solvent and financially able to keep doing the other things that the post is there for. The drive-through takeout food service was very helpful. And then, as the areas reopened to... As the tier system progressed in Orange County, and now on Tuesday, the 15th of June, it went away, we were able to open the post up as much as possible, at the same time, supporting military veterans. One of the things, we have just an excellent service officer, Corey Behill, who is widely connected in the veteran community. And he's helped the city with its homelessness problem by helping to find shelter and military veterans in Newport Beach and in other cities in Orange County. So, in total, American Legion Post has been here a long time, almost 100 years. Looking forward to another 100 years coming up. And the post and its members are really honored to be of service to military veterans in Newport Beach and to serve the community. And thank you all for the opportunity to say a few words about the American Legion.
Thank you, John. Do you have any comments in council?
I just wanted to add, John, thank you very much. But I wanted to add, one of my favorite things that I've participated in as an auxiliary member was welcoming home the troops. And when we've done that, it does more for us than it does for them, but we are there with their families and passing out snacks and cheering when they arrive. And that's just been one of the most rewarding things. And the thing... One of the things I missed most during the pandemic was a term you youngsters may not know what it means, but every Tuesday afternoon, they have a hootenanny. And I went down last Tuesday with friends, and it was jam-packed, and everyone was so thrilled to be back, and the music was amazing. So thank you for all that you do.
Oh, well, thank you. And the hootenanny is back in force, and we're gradually getting the bands back that the post has had before. The hootenanny, for those of you aren't aware of it, is about 20 musicians, about half of them are professional. And they get together for a jam session every Tuesday afternoon at the post from about noon to 4 o'clock. And they were again... They were there again today, so...
Great.
Anything else?
Mr. Dixon?
Well, I just wanted to thank you, John, and all that you do with the American Legion. I mean, it's always an honor for all of us who serve the city to attend your many events, that Flag Day, Memorial Day, Veterans Day. It's a constant reminder in our community of how important our military veterans are. And thank you for keeping the patriotism alive for our great country and reminding us how important it is to honor those who serve. So thank you very much for all you do. Thank you.
And thank you all.
Mr. Duffield?
Sorry, I just wanted to comment that every... I don't think I've ever gone by the American Legion on a Saturday or Sunday. You guys have too much fun. I always want to pull in, but there's no space. No, you do a great job, and it's wonderful to see how much fun you guys have over there all the time, actually. Thanks.
Thank you. And thank you for coming over to our American Legion Yacht Club to serve as a featured speaker that evening.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you all.
All right, we're moving on to study session item number four, and that's a review of the draft housing element. So I think we have our team here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Avery, and city council members. I'm Simone Georgias. I'm your community development director, and we have a PowerPoint presentation for you. With me also is Ben Zadiba. He's our senior planner, who's also been working on our housing element. I did have this handout for all of the council members, and there are some copies in the lobby for the public, too. So this is really a continuation from our conversation we've had two weeks ago on June 8th. Just a little background, and this is really for our residents at home, is like, why are we planning for housing? Well, housing is mandated by the state of California, and there on the screen, you can see what the city's mandate is... I'm sorry, the state's mandate to plan for housing. And you can see the different income levels that we have to plan for, for the very low income, the low income, the moderate, and the above moderate. So the challenge for the city is planning for that very low income, low and moderate. The above moderate, that's your market rate housing. So it's that very low income that we are struggling to plan for. And we had... We did have our housing committee work on this, and now we're at the city council, and we're getting closer to kind of getting to consensus here. So just a reminder, back on June 8th, where before you, we had some feedback from the city council. We did talk about different alternative options, options one and two, and developing something in between that. And I'll show you that here in a moment. We talked about the ADUs. We talked about looking at Banning Ranch and Coyote Canyon, and trying to reduce the number of affordable units, either in the airport area or just equitable throughout the entire city. And then looking at our buffer units that we have as 5%, see if we could increase that. In addition, the council asked that the staff go ahead and reach out to Banning Ranch, the LLC, the conservancy, and Coyote Canyon folks. So I want to talk about a little bit about that. So let's start with Banning Ranch. So we had... Did have a chance to speak to the LLC. Those are the current property owners. The conservancy group that's looking to acquire the property to change Banning Ranch into some type of state park of some sort, and the Trust for Public Lands. So the way it works is the Trust for Public Lands is going to be the new buyer. They are currently in escrow. They're the ones that are buying the property from the Banning Ranch LLC. And as with our conversation with them, this is what they've expressed to us, that there are different funding sources that are utilized to acquire the property, that it's coming with some caveats. And those caveats are deed restrictions to restrict any development on the Banning Ranch property. So that is from the pledge donation from the Randalls. I think he's actually put money into escrow. Plus, they're actually getting different funding sources from the state, different state agency. And what they've expressed to us is that it's coming with these restrictions, that there's going to be a requirement for deed restriction. Now, once the Trust for Public Lands acquires the property, they want to deed it over to a public agency to run, to create and run and manage a park. And there's a closed session item with the county board of supervisors on Banning Ranch, so we're assuming that that is what the discussion piece is, whether they want to go forward with due diligence to accept that Banning Ranch property. And that'd be a deed transfer, either a quitclaim deed or some other instrument. But when we look at the county's current housing element, they actually have housing units planned for Banning Ranch already. They have about 1,000 affordable units that's planned for Banning Ranch. And if the county wants to eliminate those 1,000 units, they're going to have to find a new location for those housing units, because we have SB 330, which handcuffs all public agencies from getting rid of housing or removing housing from your general plan. The county has also talked about adding more units, because they are a public agency, they're struggling to find locations for their RENA, and their RENA is 10,000 units. So they're struggling to find locations. They're going to add more housing units to Banning Ranch. Now, I... This is probably preliminary, where you have the planning staff doing something, and maybe the board hasn't really made decisions about what they want to do for Banning Ranch. But the point is, is that if their housing element includes more units on Banning Ranch to satisfy their RENA, and the city annexes Banning Ranch, then we have to accept those RENA units. So in a sense, if we plan for RENA and they plan for RENA, we have to take theirs if we annex the Banning Ranch area. Banning Ranch, and I'll show you this next slide. So you have two different colors, the orange and the purple. So the orange is in the county jurisdiction proper. The purple is in the city's jurisdiction. All of it combined is the Banning Ranch piece of land, of property that we're talking about. But all of Banning Ranch is in the city's sphere of influence, and that allows us to do future entitlement and future planning process, because we assume we're going to take Banning Ranch and annex... take Banning Ranch and annex it. So that's why it's in our sphere. But if it's, if we never annex it, the county already has housing units, plus they have, they're going to plan for more housing units. So we're not really sure how this is going to be playing out. We are interested in Banning Ranch, not to eliminate a park, but we have a RENA crisis that we want to continue planning for those housing units. And the county has the same condition, too. They have a RENA crisis, too, that they're trying to plan for. So I've shared everything I've known regarding to Banning Ranch and what's the current state. Now I want to just go ahead and transition over to Coyote Canyon. So this is adjacent to the Coyote Canyon landfill. It is about 22-acre site that is owned, is actually owned by the county, but it's within the city of Newport Beach's jurisdiction. So Teton Associates has, is doing some due diligence out there, because the county wants to plan for some type of amenity on the landfill, either a golf course of some sort. But they also have recognized that there is real dirt out there where you actually can plan for housing. And this is actually a good thing for us, because we're struggling to find sites to allow for housing opportunity. It may be 22 acres and maybe more, they're still working through their due diligence process, but they're very receptive to planning for affordable housing, and they want to collaborate with the city, they want to be good partners with the city. They're interested in boosting their density a little bit. We had originally planned for 50, they're interested in more on the 60 level, and they're happy to accept up to 35% of affordable housing. And now, I want to switch over to what we've talked about before, and I know it's really, it's fine print, but I'm going to get to kind of a summary table here. So what staff has done is taken your input from June 8th, and we've come out and said, we can plan for affordable housing up to 55% affordability level throughout, in all regions and all zones throughout the city. Now, that 55%, that's a really high number. And that high number reduces the amount of market rate units. So now we're, the majority that we're planning for in this scenario is more affordable and less market rate. But it does meet that one goal, that if the council is interested in, is reducing that number of units to be rezoned, and kind of reducing that overall build-out. But we think this 55%, this is a really high number. And so what does that mean? So here's the summary, and we could focus on that table on the right side. You see that black box, the rezone strategies, that's 5,420 units. That's how much we're going to add to the city with this housing element. We are, we are adding the 1,000 units for the ADU. We already have projects in the pipeline, and then we've heard from the council from June 8th to say, you know, find a lower, find a buffer that it's kind of not as low as 5%, and is not as high as 15%. So we came with a buffer about 12%. And what does that mean? Well, if you, you see this table on the screen, we have that option one that we shared on June 8th, and then the option two on the right side, we shared with June 8th, and so we came in somewhere in between. So we could definitely reduce that, that overall rezone down to 5,400. But again, it's, it's really assuming we're planning for more affordable units than market rate units. So we want to propose another option, we're going to call it option B. Again, there is a fine print here, sorry about that. But instead of planning for 55 units of affordability, we're just going to plan for 40% of, to be affordable. And we've heard this from the community members, that 60-40 split seems to be that sweet spot for, for the community and for the development community. So the 40% affordable is not the majority of the housing units, the house, the majority of the housing units will be market rate at 60%, but 40% will be affordable. And it comes with a little bit of, let me see if I can switch here. So what happens, though, that it pushes up the number of rezoned units that we're planning for, up to 6,100 units. So this is our plan B. We still have a buffer of 13%, which I'm really happy about, but I'll, I'll listen to council's input on this. And if you compare all those scenarios together, we have our option A and option B, and I've labeled the top of the, the column there. So option A is planning for more affordable units than market rate units, and option B plans for more of market rate units and less affordable units. But it is still 40%. I mean, that's a really big number. But you can see where the rezone strategy changes. It goes up from 5,420 up another 700 units. Our buffer remains about consistent in that, that lowered, that mid-teen area, about 13% on really both of those areas. So at the end of this presentation, we'd like to get your, the council's feedback on either option A or option B or a different option. I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Ben Zadiba. He's going to start, we're just going to have a discussion here about inclusionary housing. So go ahead, Ben.
Thanks, Simone. Good afternoon, Mayor Avery, council members, Ben Zadiba with the Planning Division. As Simone said, I'll provide you a brief overview of inclusionary housing, a little more information of what other cities in our locality are doing, and what the consideration should be when making policy. So as shown on the screen, what really is inclusionary housing? The big takeaway is that it helps to provide housing for lower-income households in high-cost markets, and that references where the economy is very strong, such as Newport Beach, it costs a lot to build, such as Newport Beach. So how do we provide affordable housing on housing projects in an area like this? So as the first bullet point states, an inclusionary housing ordinance is a law that would require a minimum amount of affordability on projects that meet certain housing thresholds. So you can set a minimum unit count, or it could apply to all housing projects, in addition to rental and for sale. It can apply to a project that meets a certain threshold of five to 10 units. We'll get into that a little more later on with the examples for the different localities. But in essence, this is what inclusionary housing is when we look at the technical definition. It's important to know that one size does not fit all, so just because Beverly Hills has 10% doesn't mean that's going to work here, or Irvine has 15% currently, it may not work here. We need to study that further, and that's why the policy has currently written in the, in the draft housing element, talks about studying inclusionary housing and really what works for the city, what's going to help spur affordable housing development, and will really work well in our environment. As it states, too high of a percentage may make some projects financially infeasible. So if we were to, say, require 40% inclusionary, that's very high, as you'll see in a moment, in relation to the rest of the region. And really, that makes it tough for developers to make a project pencil. In addition, it may be seen as a hindrance or an impediment to affordable housing, which is counterproductive to the policy itself. Without inclusionary housing, it is also important to note that there's no requirement for a developer to develop affordable housing in a housing project. As we've learned, the buffer is very important. If there is no inclusionary requirement, then we would be likely taken away from that buffer with every housing project, due to the fact that maybe the developer's not providing any affordable housing as part of their project. So in case the community didn't know, the city did have an inclusionary ordinance. Important takeaway here, I'll go ahead and start off with that, is that it was adopted actually to meet, to help meet the larger fourth cycle regional housing needs assessment back in 2006. It was subsequently rescinded when we only had an allocation of five units. So that was 2013 when that was taken away. I do want to note that we have a few projects that have been subjected to the inclusionary housing ordinance that are currently online. Meridian, which is just off Santa Barbara Drive, that paid in lieu fees for the 79 units there. Villas Fashion Island, the larger apartment complex in the Fashion Island proper Newport Center, rather, actually did off-site covenants at the Baywood Apartments for 105 units, so that was another option. And then Uptown Newport also was part of this, and they decided to provide the units onsite. So those are three different options of how it applied in the city when it was actually in effect. So you can read further there, we did have 15% of all units, and that's for-sale projects, so didn't apply to rental when it was in effect for the city. It only applied to projects that had a subdivision map to, in effect, create ownership units. So of note, this also applied to condominium projects. If you're in Coron del Mar, you know, that's a very lucrative business where people will buy a duplex and convert it to condominiums, or they will buy a single-family and convert it to condominiums. On that increase in units, that developer would pay a fee, at the time it was $26,125 per unit, and as a note, that is adjusted annually for inflation. I'll also note that the city would have to study that fee, I believe that's quite low, actually, in relationship to other jurisdictions. So getting into local examples, I would say that, I want to start off by saying that the state of California actually has 230 recognized inclusionary housing programs. That's the third most in the nation. So California, actually, that's a pretty common methodology to spur affordable housing development, and I think it's largely due to the higher cost of development throughout the state. So this is San Clemente. 15% of all units in projects with six or more units must be affordable to very low or low-income families. As you can see, there is rental and ownership, those are different, so rental versus ownership, you can have different requirements. You can either provide onsite, offsite, or in lieu fee, kind of as I touched on with the Newport Beach examples. Now we have Irvine. Of note, Irvine is the largest producer of affordable units in Orange County. At present, they have a 15% of all housing projects must be affordable. I will also note that they are considering an increase to 20%, largely due to the high RENA number that they have. If you're unaware, they have about 23,000, I believe, is their total RENA, which is pretty substantial. And this is from what I've been told, we do have our consultant, Dave Barkwess from Kimley Horn. I believe he can attest to this, that many cities and jurisdictions throughout the Southern California region are actually considering increasing their inclusionary housing requirements due to the heightened RENA and the larger affordability requirements that we're seeing. Huntington Beach, currently 10% of total units, and that's projects with three or more units. As you can see, rental and ownership are all or nothing, but they're for different income levels, so ownership is 10% moderate-income households, and rental is 10% low-income households. Again, onsite, offsite options, so if it can't be accommodated onsite, the developer can look elsewhere. There's also options for in lieu fees when it's more than 30 units in the project. So this is a good snapshot, I know there's a lot here, so I'll stay on the slide for a little bit. But what's really important is the inclusionary percentage. You'll see that the average is between 10 and 20, around 15%. And that's just a snapshot of other jurisdictions that are in our somewhat immediate vicinity, spanning from Beverly Hills, which again, 10% inclusionary, up to Irvine, which is considering 20%. Pasadena currently has 20% as part of their inclusionary requirement. So again, this just gives you a snapshot of our immediate SoCal region and what other cities are currently doing. Again, the 20% for Irvine is in red, because that is currently being considered as part of their effort to meet their heightened RENA allocation. So the city does have proposed inclusionary policy language in the draft housing element. It's really boils down to a two-step process. There's a little more text in the document if you want to read it. But what it really looks at is adopting an interim policy of 15% affordable, and that's a six-month time span. So within six months of housing element adoption, we are to adopt an interim policy that would require 15% affordable inclusionary housing for all projects, or there could be additional stipulations. And we can also consider other percentages, that's why we have, do we want to require 20%? That may be something that would be worth discussing, we would be looking to your direction for that. And then, within three years, and this is a state mandate or statutory requirement, we have to rezone, and part of that is the inclusionary housing ordinance, which a key word is "study." Again, "study," this is very important. There's a lot of components and moving parts to an inclusionary ordinance, so we don't expect anyone to have the answers today at this point in time. Kind of digressing into the next topic, again, we'll revisit the inclusionary at the end of the presentation. Last night, we did hold a community workshop, I don't know if any of you were able to attend, but we did have 41 attendees excluding staff and consultants. That was pretty well attended for a Monday night. We talked about inclusionary housing, we heard that the public wanted more information on housing overlays, so we did talk about overlays. We also talked about accessory dwelling units and how those will help offset some of the RENA allocation. Talking to the points at the bottom, those were the frequently asked questions or comments in the chat. We had people asking about Banning Ranch, ADUs, there seemed to be a lot of interest in what's required and what the city is doing to spur development of ADUs, airport area and its importance with this existing business community, timing of the circulation element and EIR, and the process moving forward. Speaking of which, this is our tentative schedule, which we're still looking to stick to. As we said, last night, we had our virtual community workshop, we are speaking with you this afternoon, that's highlighted in red. And then, as you can see, we proceed down to July 13th, which is when staff is looking to present you with a revised draft housing element. That would include the scenario that we're looking at today, whichever scenario you do direct us to choose. And then eventually, as you'll see, January 11th, 2022, it's crazy, we're talking about 2022, we're looking for adoption of the housing element, which would subsequently be submitted to HCD to make sure that we comply with the statutory deadline. Again, as a reminder, the deadline is October 15th. There's a 120-day grace period within which penalties are not assessed, so that puts it out to mid-February that we'd have to have it submitted by. So again, this afternoon, we're looking for direction on two things. One is option A or B acceptable for staff to move forward with. And again, that would be bringing you a revised draft July 13th, that's your meeting for consideration. And then B, that's a bad way to put it, but second, should we make any changes to policy action 1K regarding inclusionary housing? And that really looks to, do you want to consider 20% for the interim? Is that something we should consider putting in the draft language? As I said, I'll reiterate, we're coming back July 13th with an updated draft, including the revised scenario that you provide direction on this afternoon. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We're looking for questions, Simone, if you have any final remarks to make? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some kind of top-line questions, just as we absorb this. In our option A or B, or whatever we end up with, how are we factoring in the impacts of an inclusionary ordinance? Have you done projections if we were at 20% or 25% or 15%? How do we marry the two together?
I think that's, thank you, Councilmember Dixon, that's a really good question. So from a staff standpoint, we are looking to get as much of a buffer as possible, and that buffer helps us in case our inclusionary ordinance comes in a little too low. And so here you have those two options, option A and option B. That buffer is really the important piece to this, and I would suggest the council not go any lower on the buffer. And if we, if you were to choose an option B, you can see there, option B has a buffer of 316 units, and low and very low, and a buffer of 100 units on the moderate side. Those are, those are pretty good. We, the HCD is recommending anything between 20 and 30%, but you know, we'll, we'll take what the council was willing to support. And I think with, with your, the question about the inclusionary ordinance, what is the kind of proper level? We, we think that if it's going to be a very low inclusionary number, say it's 10%, we're going to be burning through these buffer units rather quickly.
Because we won't have enough.
We won't have enough, and that means we'll have to come back early in the process to rezon more properties. And that, that's really the, kind of the effect.
Gives us a good, secure buffer, I guess. As long as we're on this slide, when we talk about pipeline projects, 1900, those are projects that are already approved in the pipeline?
That's correct. Those are projects already approved, they're in the pipeline, they're entitled. They may be in construction, but they don't have a certificate of occupancy, but we can get credit for.
So they're already, almost 2,000 units are already underway? That's very good.
That, that's great, that helps us tremendously.
All right, I was going to ask, just curiously, Irvine has had a 15% inclusionary ordinance for what period of time, do you know?
Since their last housing cycle, so this was going back, yeah, about eight years.
But they're still short 24,000 units? I mean, so...
But their RENA allocation was the 23,000 units.
Even with a 15% inclusion, so it kind of leans, begs to a higher number, because it's, I mean, they'd been working on that, and they still were short. That's fascinating. And when you say the reason, the term we're using, rezone, that's obviously what we would be doing. Now, this, we've been going through this public process for, with engaging the community, and you've been talking to property owners for quite some time, and certainly the word is out in the community that we're open to all comers to build more housing. Have you been receiving any interest?
There's definitely interest from different property owners. You know, I think, I think every property owner is different, every parcel is different, because if you have a, I'll hypothetically, a Class A office building that is, has no debt on it, has positive cash flow, why would... building that is, has no debt on it, has positive cash flow, why would the property owner try to tear that down and build housing? So every case is unique. I think we get a lot of questions, a lot of interest from property owners because it's like, oh, you're going to add value to my property. But there's some property owners that are like, I don't think I'm ready yet. I think with even the Irvine Company, you know, they're dealing with COVID, they're dealing with their office vacancy, retail's changing, what's going to happen to hospitality. So even them, a prime real estate developer and owner, I think they're not even ready yet to make a hundred percent commitment on where the future's going to be because they still got to figure out what today's going to be.
So going forward, I mean, it's really, I mean, I commend all of you for the hard work you've done, and the community members have been involved in this, trying to speculate how we would do this. And you've come forward with some good options. As we go forward and the economy picks up, do you, I would think we would all anticipate there's going to be continued interest to continue to invest in development of affordable as well as market rate housing in Newport Beach. So even though we may not have targeted any of these, we would accept other properties, correct, or other areas of the city?
So we have, Ben, did we have the maps attached? So we have actually, per the state law, we actually have to identify the parcels that are prime for a rezone opportunity. So if the council wanted to say, right now, our plan is to have an overlay that'll affect those parcels, but if you want to have an overlay that affects more parcels in that area, that's fine. We can definitely have a policy like that. So if you're not identified as a parcel in this housing element, then you have to submit a general plan amendment. So either you're in...
Oh, so it's, oh, I see. So there's an advantage calling all interested parties if they really want to avoid a general plan process. And that is what the DUDOC properties did. So they came in, and that's great, and I learned about that project, and I'm very supportive. All right, so if you would be so kind to go to option B, so let me just kind of walk through that real quickly. So I think what you, if I heard you correctly, the desirable formula percentage is sixty percent market rate, forty percent affordable. And the reason is, if you could restate why you feel that's desirable?
Certainly. So this plan in front of you, where you see that first red box or column, really plans for affordability of forty percent. So the majority of the units that we're planning for is going to be market rate units, which makes complete sense. To plan for a higher percentage, that means we're going to plan for more affordable units than market rate units. You can definitely do that. But then we have this issue with, do we have enough buffer units to meet that high plan? Again, here's our plan, what's reality, and we got to fill the gap with buffer units. So with this plan, we're bringing down that affordability to forty percent, which is still a great number. This is not a bad number. And the majority of our housing element is going to be sixty percent of the plan is going to be for market rate units. Plus, we have, plus, we're going to have the buffer units that's to help support that forty percent. Plus, we have that discussion with the inclusionary ordinance. Is it going to be, is it ten percent, fifteen percent, is it going to be twenty percent? And that's the feedback we're looking for from the council.
And so what we've heard, when we had some speakers on this at previous study sessions, is that from a development standpoint, if I understand this correctly, the financing, external financing, the federal tax credits, the bond financing, that helps to subsidize the cost of the affordable. So a sixty percent market rate allows the property owner, the developer, to develop the quality product that we want to see in Newport Beach and have the external financing to supplement on the affordability side. So they can, the formula sixty-forty works from those, to combine all the funding sources as well as the income revenue produced from the market rate.
And that's my understanding. If we're going to plan for forty percent, the funding's out there for forty percent. The funding's not out there for fifty-five percent.
Okay, that's a very important point. Okay, all right. So I think we're headed in that, at least I'm headed in that direction. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I like Plan B as in baloney, or buffer, if you'd prefer. And what I like about the buffer, and this is something I just try to keep wanting to hit home, buffer is good because it doesn't mean those units get built. It means we have the flexibility to approve projects lower than our current suggested low-income housing requirements and not jeopardize the entire plan. So in actuality, you gave me a number earlier today, what you think will actually be built during this time period, and it's much, much lower than what we're planning for. It's just a planning document. That flexibility is something that allows it so that we don't have to have someone one hundred percent affordable, or some project that neighbors are going to not want in their neighborhood, but still has a floor on affordability, which goes to question number two. I'm leaning towards a fifteen or twenty percent floor myself.
Right.
Thank you.
Correct, thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Simone, I wonder if you could explain a little bit the difference between an inclusionary policy that we might have at, say, twenty percent and planning for affordable housing at forty percent, because it looks like it doesn't make any sense.
Right, and it doesn't make sense, but I will do my best to try to explain that. So the state has mandated that all cities need to plan for housing. And they give us such a ridiculously, ridiculously high RINA number that we have to boost up our affordability percentage. And again, it's just a plan. It's a concept. It's an idea. And then we need policies to support that idea. So this idea in front of us now is forty percent. So what, how are you going to support that forty percent? Well, we're going to support it by doing an overlay. We're going to do a rezone. We're going to support it by providing an inclusionary ordinance at some point. So those are ways that we're going to be able to support it. The inclusionary part, the actual ordinance, and I'll, let me, let me just go to that And I think it's really important. So here you have that column with all those percentages. So again, this is just a way to support that affordable housing. We know from our consultant, who's been dealing with HCD, they're not going to, HCD will not support anything above twenty percent. And the reason why is because they don't want to limit the housing potential. I think their max is about twenty percent. I don't think they're interested yet in going higher than that because if you, if a city says, we're going to adopt a fifty percent inclusionary, you pretty much shut down development. There's no funding for fifty percent. No one's going to do a project, you can't make it pencil. It's okay for like jamboree housing because they have other ways to subsidize a housing project. They do very few projects. They can do a hundred percent because they have different finance tools. The state's going to go, well, that's, that's the exception. That's not the norm. So this is going to be a minimum that the city would adopt, and it's whatever the council feels is appropriate, we do suggest between a fifteen and twenty percent. And the whole point of this, it's going to support that forty percent plan. And HCD even knows that if your minimum's twenty percent and your plan is forty percent, you're going to have a gap. And that's why HCD goes, then plan a buffer, because no one's going to come in with, maybe you won't have many projects coming in with a forty percent. Maybe everybody's going to come in with a twenty percent. Just have enough buffer units. And if you don't have buffer units, then you're going to go back and rezone later.
But we're anticipating that if we have a twenty percent buffer, that there are enough affordable housing developers who see the benefit of forty percent and all of the tax credits and property tax relief and variety of things, that they will come in at a sixty-forty for us, which will actually really benefit us.
And that'd be great if a developer knows how to get that financing and that could support a sixty-forty project. That'd be perfect for us. Absolutely.
And then, I have a question about this inclusionary policy and the length of time that it's going to take us to get this enacted, because we have projects in the pipeline that are not anywhere near twenty percent, and we have projects that we can foresee coming down the road that are not twenty percent. And yet, we're talking, how long before we get an inclusionary policy passed?
So this, the policy in the housing element, which the council can change, this is just our recommendation, is that let's get an interim policy adopted by the council as a city council policy within the first six months. And then if we want to study an actual ordinance, we have thirty-six months. Or the council can say, no, we don't like any of this. Let's go ahead and study the inclusionary ordinance now. Let's get it done ASAP. We just need to know where the council fits with this.
I'm in the camp of let's get it done ASAP. And the other question I have is about accessory dwelling units. This is another, everything we give you is ASAP, Simone. On the policy for ADUs, I'm getting, as you and I talked today, I'm getting comments from constituents who are trying to get projects approved with an ADU that are having trouble doing that. And so how do we move that as quickly as we can down the road so that we have a policy that everybody knows what they can do? And are there challenges that we can lodge with Sacramento about obstacles that we see? And how can we get that moving so that those obstacles are resolved?
So one change is that we're working on now is our land use. Our zoning code is not the most permissive. It's kind of in the middle. And if you recall, in the past, we never allowed ADUs. We changed our code. We allowed some of it to comply with state law. Now, council's directed us to do even more. And so we're working on that. From a schedule standpoint, that code change will come to the council in October. And if the council adopts it, we'll go ahead and implement it because we're communicating, even though it has to go to Coastal, we're talking to Coastal about allowing us to implement our ADU ordinance to be more permissive. So we look at that as October. So that's the zoning side of things. The building code side of things, that's much more challenging for us. If our building department issues a permit to say, this is a new dwelling unit, that the building department wants to say that this complies with all the minimum code requirements. And unfortunately, it could be expensive for a property owner, and we don't know how much that would cost because every home is different. Does it have enough seismic restraints? Does it have enough anchoring? Does it have the proper emergency egress windows? There's a number of different things that we want in a dwelling unit, and that can get expensive. It's not to say it can't be done, but the property owner's going to have to spend a little bit of money to make it comply.
I think this is a new bill, the one that has been talking to me about it. And my last question is about a senior overlay. Recognizing that establishing RINA allocations is only the first step and that real work comes next in the form of the land use plan, can you explain how we could introduce a senior overlay into our plan? Because it seems like housing for seniors is one of the most digestible of all the possible scenarios that we could come up with. And so how do we establish a senior overlay that really encourages that?
So I think if the council would like to go ahead and direct staff tonight, either through a straw poll, just to say to include an overlay or some type of zoning that encourages and prioritizes senior housing. And we'll go look through the document and see where it could fit or what part of town it could fit. It's just going to be a policy, it's a recommendation from the council tonight. We'll include it as a policy. We'll work on that come by on July thirteenth and show you that we've written that policy.
All right. Thank you so much.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on some of Ms. Brenner's questions I have. So back to the ADUs, I thought with the new state law that we have no discretion on ADUs. We have to implement state law, which is obviously more stringent than our own prior ordinance.
We do have to implement state law. The difference was in what we did from a staff standpoint in the council adoption is that if you wanted to convert your bedroom to an ADU, our code said you couldn't do it. If you wanted to convert your garage to an ADU, our code said you can do it. So what we're changing in the code is really to say, you can now convert your bedroom to an accessory dwelling unit. And that was that missing piece. And it's still complying with state law.
Yeah, because state law requires that, allows that, or permits it, I should say.
State law gave us a little bit of flexibility, and we spoke with HCD, and they accepted our regs.
Okay, so just from my understanding, what people ask, so when people apply for ADUs, are you processing applications now?
Certainly, we're processing a number of them. The only, the only one that we're not processing is converting that bedroom to an ADU.
Okay. And then back to the inclusionary, so are you recommending that we delay this and take three years to implement it? Why? I mean, for the benefit of those project owners, developers, builders, who really want direction as to what is the city's requirement, wouldn't we want to make a decision on inclusionary so they could do their proper planning?
So our thought was, in this, on the screen there, it was a two-step process. Do the interim policy of fifteen percent. And then if there was, needed more community dialogue, spend the time with the community to talk through what the ordinance is going to look like. But if the council says that, let's not, let's go ahead and let's just focus on an ordinance now and get that done, we can, we happy to do that also.
Okay, I would support going to twenty percent. And I mean, it just seems that, it just puts people in an unknown area of what they're going to do to develop that. And then I would support, just for purposes of the record, senior overlay wherever we can do it. I think that makes a lot of sense in our aging community. That's my position. So if we do a straw vote, I'll be supportive of that. And I'm also supportive of the sixty-forty option Plan B and an inclusionary ordinance of twenty percent.
Okay.
Mr. Ball.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, Simone. You guys had mentioned when Baywood and Meridian and Uptown had kind of gone their, their three separate options. When Baywood reallocated those units to be low-income or moderate or somewhere around there, do those get credit to the RINA numbers? If we reallocate existing units for affordable, do we find credit in RINA?
They were applied to our last cycle. There's a change. State law has changed. And so they don't, they don't want to give us a lot of credit for conversions. They give us a little bit. And we try to change that law, and no one would bite on that. They want production.
Okay. So they're giving us percentage against it. So it's not apples-apples. Okay, great. And then, when it comes to the buffer versus the inclusionary, I mean, and I really like the plans you guys have put forth, and I've come to understand the buffer, I think, a lot more as we've gone through these meetings and these study sessions. I really appreciate you nailing that in for us. And I definitely prefer a higher buffer, I think, as we move forward. It's not that we want to find more. I think, I know there's a lot of legwork on behalf of staff in finding, locating, dealing with these landowners, trying to get some kind of commitment. But a buffer seems to have a better long-term policy in my mind than inclusionary. I think inclusionary, I know we say we can get to forty percent. I think that is a pipe dream. I think twenty percent still pushes away a certain amount of developers in certain projects that we would really need the help. And you know, when I look towards projects that can't always just be, you know, legacy projects, like when we look towards Balboa Village and some of those places, we, if we have a full, or if we have a twenty percent inclusionary going on those projects, I don't think they're ever pencil out. I don't think that land can pencil with twenty percent affordable in some of our locations. And it's not to say we don't have locations, but it just makes me concerned that the higher that percentage for inclusionary, the more developers will not want to build in Newport. And that's a metric I don't like. I like a buffer metric where we, as a city, make a bigger plan. But ramping that to twenty makes me really frightened. I actually, I kind of prefer the Beverly Hills, ten percent, and I wouldn't mind throwing up that buffer so you guys feel more comfortable and HCD feels more comfortable with our buffer. But I do start worrying when we start throwing that inclusionary number that we just, because it's not that we are Irvine and all of our land is very, very similar where Newport, and some of it is built onto the water. And you know, I want to see the Irvine Company come into play right now, and I know they're a slow-moving machine. But I would really like them to continue doing the great developments and the creative ways to get us RINA numbers. And sometimes I get frightened that we're hamstringing some of our more sensitive regions. But I greatly appreciate the report, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
So on the, on the issue of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, one of the, this has come up in a handful of cities. And in March, I'm looking at a letter right now, in March of 2021, La Habra was looking at it, and they received a letter that was signed by the Building Industry Association, OC Tax, Orange County Business Council, Manufacturing Housing Educational Trust, and the California Association of, or CAA, I'm forgetting what it is. I know it's apartments, but I'm forgetting what the association is. Anyway, the discussion in that letter was that inclusionary zoning ordinances don't work. And their argument is that they're looking at a study that, at least according to the letter, said that in forty-five cities where data was available, new housing production drastically decreased by an average of thirty-one percent within one year of adopting inclusionary housing policies. The Legislative Analyst's Office came out with a report commenting on the perspectives on helping low-income Californians afford housing. And the comment there was that the approach of, the approach that, I'm sorry, it says, "It finds that many housing programs, vouchers, rent control, and inclusionary housing attempt to make housing more affordable without increasing the overall supply of housing. This approach does very little to address the underlying cause of California's high housing costs, housing shortage." And so this was when we last... And so, this was when we last, we're talking about this issue, this was one of the issues that I was trying to figure out when I was dealing with inclusion, when we're talking about inclusionary zoning, is the policies seem to have varying degrees of success in actually adopting them. And so, I'm curious whether an inclusionary zoning ordinance is for our purposes or for purposes of trying to get it to HCD and having HCD say, yes, we'd like to see that. And I'm, so that's what I'm trying to work through is, you know, what's the end goal with the inclusionary zoning? Is it, is it really for our benefit in order to make sure that people are supplying us with affordable housing? Or is it, because we can do that, you know, in a different, in a variety of different ways. I mean, if we're looking at the housing element, and the housing element itself is saying, we know we need this much, we can always update our zoning code to require that as well. And if they give us less than this, then it'd require, I don't know, maybe a general plan amendment or a zoning code amendment or something. But as only, inclusionary zoning, if this letter is correct, seems that it would accomplish the opposite. And so, I just want to make sure, we're trying to figure out, what are we, what are we trying to do with this approach? And does HCD, is HCD basically saying, we'd like to see this and housing elements submitted to us?
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neal. I'm going to have our consultant, David Barquist, just to provide some input on the HCD. How is HCD looking at that? Usually, this is a policy to support our RINA efforts, but I'd like to get David's input on how HCD looks at inclusionary.
Yeah. When we look at, when we look at inclusionary, it's a, really a technique and a tool that is employed, you know, by jurisdictions to achieve those units. And so, if you ask HCD, they don't have a opinion per se on the validity of inclusionary housing. And so, they would give you resources and other things, but they don't take a position in support or not support of inclusionary, although they do have articles and information. But it's really looking at it as one tool in the toolkit that you can use to produce affordable. So, if you asked HCD in conclusion if they supported or didn't support it, they wouldn't give you a straight answer. So, that's kind of what we're dealing with in this process. So, it's really a local decision, if you will.
Yeah. So, I guess then, if we are moving forward on this process and we were to submit something to, you know, HCD saying, hey, look, we plan on, we plan on some kind of, we plan on studying an inclusionary zoning ordinance, let me put it differently, where it's the three-year process. We plan on looking at it and studying it. I mean, it's possible that after we look at it and study it, that it doesn't make sense for our approach, then we wouldn't adopt it. We wouldn't be violating our housing element that we've submitted to HCD, but we've committed to at least looking at it. And the reason I mention that is because if this is right, you know, it doesn't mean that we're going to start approving projects that don't have affordable components to them. I suspect everyone understands that at this point, that's going to be required. But I'm just trying to figure out what the, what the proper mechanism is going to be going forward on this. It's messy and it's complicated, but I've read up on the inclusionary zoning policies, and there seems to be quite a bit of dispute over their effectiveness. I also had one quick question on Banning Ranch also. So, Banning Ranch recently received $8 million grant from the, I mean, the state's Fish and Wildlife Department that they announced banning would be receiving $8 million. At least, that's what I've read in the Daily Pilot. I think it's probably time for us to send a letter to HCD asking them what the heck in a much nicer way. Like, is the state really sending money to stop us from building? Like, is one state agency really trying to send money to make sure that we can't build while another state agency is telling us to build? I mean, this is just, this continues to be exactly what we've been talking about in our appeal in the first place, was saying, we have so many government agencies telling us, don't build. You're the one telling us to build. Could we please get some relief here? This is exactly the example. Another example of us trying to find something and having one state agency say no. I mean, if there really is going to be a deed restriction and the state is giving money to further that deed restriction to prohibit housing, maybe the other housing, maybe the other state agency on this one needs to step up and either say, no, we have primacy, or okay, we'll give you relief. But just getting caught in the middle between two state agencies is ridiculous. And so, I think it's, it's time now that the state has actually stepped in and tried to finance this, that we should probably step in and just say, choose one, but we can't be stuck in the, we can't be stuck in the middle on this. So, I would support that letter going out, as Ms. Brenner said, ASAP.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, absolutely. I think we need clarification from the state, the governor's office, and at the very least, clarification and possibly a waiver on our RINA requirements when we have 400 acres. We're only talking, if there were to be development, how many acres on Banning Ranch? About 25 acres would be developed out of the 400?
About 30.
So, we clearly need to be, step up the conversation about that. All right. Well, this has been helpful from my own perspective of understanding inclusionary. So, I will withdraw my suggestion. I, I thought this was a mandate, honestly. So, it is not a part of the RINA mandate? Okay.
No, correct.
All right. Well, I misunderstood that. So, I think we should study it and not be too hasty because I feel that there is just, as I indicated in my first question, there are just a lot of variables, and how does it affect the output? So, if we know, if we support option B, for example, at 40% or of the areas that will be in the 35 or 40% range, we should be accomplishing affordable housing in excess of what an inclusionary ordinance would require.
That's, that's true. As long as we have the policies to support that we want affordable housing when a developer submits an application.
But Mr. Blom made an interesting point that in our expensive oceanfront coastal properties, I mean, how realistic is it that we would see affordable housing projects with a 20% inclusionary requirement? I think it'd be pretty tough.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Okay. So, I'll withdraw my support for that until we know more. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
So, Simone, if we don't have a high inclusionary policy, does our, our housing element showing 60-40, does that take care of it? Or, I mean, so someone wants to develop a property in that zone, do they have to meet that affordability component in order to have their project approved through us?
No. If we don't have an inclusionary ordinance, then there would be no requirement for affordable housing. One thing to look forward to is that we're going to, once we can get some council direction, we're going to submit a draft to HCD. And if the council says, let's, let's have a plan, just says, we'll study it without any commitments, that way, we just wait to see what HCD says, and they provide their comments back to us.
So, in the meantime, we will continue to approve projects with less than 20% affordable as they come to us.
Yeah. And just think about what's in the pipeline right now. Projects, interesting enough, what helps us is state law has density bonus. And density bonus says you can boost your density as long as you provide affordable housing. And so, that actually benefits us on the affordable housing front, where we're actually seeing projects with affordable housing units.
A recent example that came to us, though, was one where it's a small project, and with their density bonus, they were just able to build more units there than we would have found acceptable if they didn't have to have that affordable component. So, it actually hurt us more than, I mean, it helped us in terms of having affordable units, but it hurt us in terms of planning projects that are desirable, that enhance the ambiance of Newport Beach.
Yeah. I understand. But in addition with that project, there was an example of affordability that was provided.
Yeah. And one other thing, I've been watching videos inclusion, on inclusionary policy, and they're pretty dry. But, but one of the things that they said in this was that the places where a high inclusionary policy actually works is where the land value is more expensive. Because when you have an inclusionary policy on a property where the market rate units are much higher, it actually enables the builder to build something with more affordable units. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
Well, I'm worried about us not having a policy in place so that people start, you know, getting more and more projects approved with fewer affordable units, and we end up stuck down the line, kind of trying to come up with all affordable units.
And hence, we're discussing with council and trying to get some direction here.
Mr. Jeffield.
Yeah, I'm for the Plan B and the 20% inclusionary. That's tough. But I kind of tend to think what you just said might be important. So, I'm for that, I guess.
Do we have any other council comments? All right. We'll go out to public comments on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Charles Klob, and I could talk forever on this. In the last two years, I've been learning about it, and I'm not a developer. So, feel free to question, Simone, after I make my speech on what I'm saying, if it's true or not. Right now, you recently approved 4400 Von Carmen, which has 5% affordable in it. It was unopposed, but it had 5% because there's nothing that requires the developer to do any more than that. You also approved, considered approving 2510 West Coast Highway, which had 10%. You also got a threatening letter from the consultant that if you didn't follow the Housing Accountability Act, you were liable. So, the Housing Accountability Act says you can build 5% of very low or 10% of low, and for that, you get a 50% density bonus. 50% of what the allowable usage of the land is, you can add to that if it fits in the envelope with a 5% affordability. Without inclusionary of any kind, you will continue to get those projects. That's the purpose for the buffer. The purpose for the buffer is even though we're saying 60-40, there's nothing that requires it. The developers are not going to come in because they're benevolent and give you 20% if you only require nothing. They're going to give you 5% to get the 5, or 50% density bonus. That's the way it works. All of us, I'm sure all of us have met with developers who have told us this. So, it's my argument that you should have that 20% density bonus as quickly as possible while you get your arms around this, because developers will clamor to come here and get on that wagon before you enact the law. And then, not to forget that density bonus, so where you're talking at Coyote Canyon of 60 units an acre, that's 90. It's really 90. They can add 50% to that if they include, 5% if there's no inclusionary, or 15 or 20% if you enact the inclusionary. So, I don't expect the BIA to support that. It's no surprise to me. I'm aware of the letter that they wrote to then-Mayor O'Neal, threatening back when this began, and I'm aware of what's happening in La Habra. And I'd say, you're not hearing from your consultants that you can't submit it to HCD. Try it. You've got nothing to lose by asking for the world and see what comes back. This is a draft you're going to send to them. Ask for the world. See what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Glad to hear from us. I'm Nancy Scarborough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I too have been listening to this for two years, and I still have questions. In fact, I have new questions after tonight, and I know you all do too. So, we're learning together, and this is a very long and frustrating process. I would like to go back to slide 12, if you don't mind. And I think I would like to point something out that I think I understand. So, on this option B, the total development potential is 9,119 units. That does not take into consideration the density bonus, and it is based on a 40% inclusionary. We're already saying that we probably won't get 40% on all projects. We might only get 20%. If we don't have an inclusionary requirement, we might get 5%. So, that number, 9,000, could be a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, bring it back. So, do we have any additional comments or direction for staff? Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just based on what Ms. Scarborough said on page, slide 12, are we referring to the 40, 60-40, the 40% affordable? Is that inclusionary?
So, the 40% is not inclusionary. It's just the plan.
It's just the plan.
That's correct.
Well, all right. I'm kind of sitting up here going back and forth on inclusionary. So, maybe we split it down the middle or something with some number that makes certain that we allow for affordability. Talk a little bit about the density bonus. We haven't factored that into any of these plans. So, and you haven't factored that into your buffer analysis either.
No. And density bonus is completely separate from this housing element. These are just base units. And the state just changed a law that allows for density bonus. And the law has changed, and I was reviewing it while Mr. Klob was talking. But, but again, this does not take into density bonus. That's a state law, and that they preempt what our housing element is. We have to plan for this. So, if a developer comes with a project and wants to utilize density bonus, they can boost the density by an additional 50%. But in return, they have to provide us 15% of very low-income units, or 24% of lower-income units, or 44% of moderate-income units. So, it's not a free, it's not free. So, if they want to boost, they want that density bonus, and they just have to request it, they're going to have to provide that certain level of very low, lower, moderate-income units.
Well, isn't there any formula that HCD could provide as a working model that, just based on experiential projections, that those kind of scenarios, so we can at least incorporate the thought process that it may be more than 9,100 units? It could be significantly more, thousands more.
It's, it's true. There could be definitely a bump in the number of units, and how does that impact going forward? But again, just to comply with HCD, we have to just plan for these, these base units. And they don't provide any guidance on the density bonus side. They just, they just adopted this new law that went into effect in January.
Well, I know. But with all these consultants out there, aren't there people that we could talk to or consulted that could project? I mean, just different scenarios.
Certainly.
You know, and how, what the worst case, I don't know if the worst-case scenario would be for this 9,000. I mean, it really kind of shifts the whole thought process on the buffer, and the 9,000 could be 15,000.
Sure. We could definitely have our consultants spend time on that.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I just want to be clear about, I can understand the BIA wanting us to build as much as possible. Some of those members of the BIA live in Newport Beach, and a great many of them live in other places. But I understand that that's business. But for us to not have an inclusionary policy means that, in essence, we are voting to increase by perhaps thousands the number of units that we have to build in Newport Beach to reach our affordability component. Is that correct?
Without an inclusionary, we're be burning through, we may possibly be burning through our buffer units if a developer does not want to take advantage of density bonus law.
Even at density bonus law, it's not going to be a high percentage. We're still going to have a lot more housing units.
That's true. That's true. And it goes back to this argument about the buffer. Do we have enough buffer?
Mr. O'Neal.
I think the point that I'm trying to make is not that we should be taking what the specimen said as gospel in a letter. I'm referencing the studies that they're showing in their letter, and that's what I was trying to understand from those. Because one of the studies is, one of the studies was from a couple of PhDs, but the other one came from the California Legislative Analyst's Office. And that's what I was trying to understand as we're working through those. Because an organization has a proclivity toward building, doesn't mean that their studies they're citing are wrong. That's why I'm trying to, that's what I was referencing, the studies, not the letter, and trying to understand them. I'm not opposed to making sure that we've got higher affordability in the, in the building. So, if there's a way to do it that, you know, doesn't have the ill effects of the inclusionary zoning ordinance that's referenced in those studies, fine. But, you know, even if we had a council policy, it's a council policy, right? It's not an ordinance. So, I'm wondering if we had a council policy in place, does that override the Housing Accountability Act?
So, it'd probably only really come into play, then, if you had a development agreement, that council policy where you had some type of discretion over the project. It wouldn't come into effect for your other projects.
Yeah. So, I mean, one of the projects that's being referenced right now is the one on the, on the, on West Coast Highway, but that one has nothing to do with, we don't have a development agreement there. This is, this is the problem. Like, we can't conflate a bunch of stuff. This is, it's important that we're trying to work through the legislation because it's really complicated, and we all know it's really complicated. We just need to... We just need to, we just need to make sure that, you know, we're working through, working, working it through in a way that, you know, makes sense. I, like I said, I don't have any problem kind of moving forward, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're agreeing to. So when we're submitting into HCD, like I said, I don't have any issue with us saying, hey, look, we're interested in doing this. But moving to the highest, highest inclusionary zoning ordinance in the county, from zero to highest, seems aggressive without a decent study associated with understanding what it is. So I understand the pros and cons, I'm just trying to, I'm saying rushing into this one aggressively seems, given the, given the changing policies at the state level anyway, constant changing, I, I'd like to understand it better before we go from zero to highest, is what I'm saying. And to Ms. Dixon's point, I mean, not like Irvine's sitting around with their highest already in the county, trying to move up and saying, hey, look at us, we're the pillar of our, of the community when it comes to this. We graded higher than they did when Orange County Register graded our last cycle. So it's probably worth, it's probably worth trying to work this through, but I don't, like I said, I don't oppose it, I'm just trying to understand when we're wrapping our arms around it, because it just doesn't strike me that even if we got it on the books as fast as possible, on a, you know, on a, which is the council policy side, I'm not sure that even overrides the, the Housing Accountability Act issues, so.
Ms. Brenner.
Simone and Will, I just sent you a copy of an email that was sent to me, and it is an article that says, inclusionary housing, there is a ton of good information on the web, including good survey data and on how many jurisdictions have IH policies and what they contain. We need to suggest how best to structure the study session. And study identifies over 1,000 inclusionary housing programs nationwide. So I think there is a lot of information out there available to us that we can access.
Well, there's a ton, I agree with that. I saw who sent it, I just took a look, I agree. A lot of those are not going to be in California, though, and that's the problem. So I'm just pointing out, California's housing policies are a mess, and I, it's, trying to jump in, yeah, I think everyone will agree on that. It's just, you know, trying to jump in with both feet, trying to figure out what the right policy going forward on this, you know, especially as we're trying to submit into HCD. I, I really don't, I think we should submit to HCD saying that we're planning on taking a strong look at inclusionary zoning, because we are and we will. It's, it's really a question of when and how, so, there you go.
Ms. Dixon.
Okay, my final comment, I think there's still so much for us to understand, but you staff are looking for direction, because what happens next, according to the schedule that at the July 13 city council meeting, you are going to be submitting the final draft?
We're going to, we're going to take your comments tonight, incorporate it into another draft version, share it with you again, and if, and we could still make some changes, and then we can ship it off to HCD. We're just trying to kind of nail down all the, kind of the, we just want to get a consensus with where the council's going.
Well, I'll just make my point, I support option B and on inclusionary, I feel like I'm going back and forth, but just as a placeholder, we need to do far more study than we know and understand the relationships, the causal relationships, and the impacts and then the bonuses. I think there's, I'm not saying we need to do this by July 13, but we clearly need to understand what we're doing as far as how the impacts all come together. So I support option B, 60-40, and a placeholder of 15% for inclusionary. Is that all you need tonight? And do we, do we?
You know, what I, what I heard this evening is that I heard the majority of the council, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're supporting option B. And in really the inclusionary part, our, our policy does talk about studying it. We can strike, if there's, if there's council support, we could strike this interim portion, this 15% interim policy, we don't have to include that. It's just going to be, we're going to study it. And if there's support from the council on that, we'll just, you know, if there's a majority support, it's really up to the council, and I think that's, that's what I've heard. I did hear a little more about senior housing, so we can include some language about senior housing. I mean, I, I think there's, I think, I think we're getting there.
And if, if that sounds like an accurate summary, if everyone supports that, maybe we just get a show of hands, if not, then we can maybe pull each, each item.
Can you break it down so that we could support some and not others?
That'd be an option as well.
So. It's option B.
So maybe start with option B, do people, people support option B? Everyone?
That's unanimous.
Is everyone supportive of studying inclusionary zoning? Is anyone, is anyone in support of having an interim council policy requiring inclusionary zoning?
Oh, I am. Mayor Protem Muldoon and councilmembers Duffield and Dixon and Brenner. And, oh, and Mayor Avery.
And, and then we need a percentage of what you'd like in that interim council policy? 15%? Is it 10%? I guess, I was sorry, 10%?
15.
Going once, going twice?
I thought we just voted on 15. Were we voting on 15?
15?
Yeah.
For the people that voted for, are you supportive of 15 for the four?
Well, we're just exploring, right? We're not committing yet.
Yeah, this is just.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, 15, sounds great. Two hot dogs, 15.
And then the senior overlay.
A senior overlay, people support a senior overlay?
That would be Mayor Avery and council, Mayor Protem Muldoon and councilmembers Dixon, O'Neill, and Brenner.
And Simone, did I cover everything?
I, I think we're good with option B, so I think that's plenty. Thank you.
So Simone, I just got a question about, when, when you're doing this, do you game it? Do you look at a property, figure out, ultimately, this is all going to be decided by the market?
Yes.
Right? That's all we need to really look at when we're trying to come up with policies, because we want people to build it. And we're in a predicament because more than any other town almost in California, we've got the most expensive land. And so it really creates a crucible for, for us to come up with policy that, that fits that and will get, get people to build.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely.
This is, and do you think that, do you see any increase in sort of what's coming over in your horizon in terms of people interested in certain projects and certain parcels?
I think there's a lot of interest in development opportunities for housing. I think the biggest challenge, a big question mark, is interest rates. Where's interest rates going? And I think the cost of construction. Lumber skyrocketed, lumber's coming down, but all the materials are, haven't come down yet. So I, I think that future is so, there's a big question mark on how this future's going to play out for us. I think there's interest today, and every project is different, every land residual is different, and then, you know, all the unknowns I just mentioned. It's, it's hard to predict that future.
And that's why it's important that we don't really rush into something.
True.
At this point, right? Right, any other council comment?
All right, now's the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Do we have any? All right. Seeing none. All right, Mr. Hart, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. The city council adjourned a closed session to meet with labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the Newport Beach Police Association. The council will not be meeting this evening to discuss the negotiation with the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards. Thank you.
All right, we are recessed until 6:30.